Welcome. This is the time and place for the May 18, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Here. Here. Here.
For the first order of business we have today is election of our new planning commission or chairman pro tem for the Planning Commission. First, I'll ask for nominations. Are there any nominations for chairman pro tem?
I nominate Mr. Hank Sheets.
We have a nomination for Mr. Hank Sheets. Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Mr. Lee.
All right. We have a nomination for Mr. Lee. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Sheets, just go ahead and...
Okay, well, we'll have elections...
I was making trouble. I apologize.
No, no, no.
Okay, so did I hear Mr. Lee withdrew? So we have a nomination for Mr. Sheets. Any other nominations? Hearing done, Mr. Sheets is the chairman pro tem.
All right. Thank you. Have the... You don't have to have a vote, I don't think.
No, because you're the only nomination.
Okay, the report on posting the agenda?
The agenda was posted on Wednesday, May 11, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
All right. Would you all please join me, stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. First order would be approval of the minutes from May 4th, of May 4th regular meeting. Do I have a motion or question?
I have to abstain?
You can't do this. That's right. We have to wait until Mr. Yassine comes. So move to the next item, please. Oral communications. I have... I don't have a card for oral communications. One moment here. Next item would be... Old business. I don't even have the right one.
Yes, Mr. Sheets, we have an item listed for old business, tentative parcel map, GLN 1625. The applicant has requested that this item be continued to June 15, 2011 without further public notice.
Okay. Any questions?
I move for tentative parcel map number GLN 1625 to be continued as certain June 15, 2011.
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so...
And that motion passes. The item is continued to June 15, 2011 without further notice.
Okay, new business. We have general plan amendment case number PGP 2011-005, zone code map amendment case number PZON 2011-006, and street vacation case number 167V.
I move to going to recess until Commissioner Yassine gets here.
Good point.
Okay, if we have a motion and a second, so when recess?
We'll take recess until Mr. Yassine gets here. Okay, we're back for the Wednesday, May 18, 2011 Planning Commission meeting after recess. I thank everybody for their patience. First, before we decide, I think we should introduce the new commissioner and let him give us a brief intro of himself, Mr. Astorian, as our new planning commissioner.
Well, thank you. I was going to have full house before I do the introduction, but albeit, yep, my name is Greg Astorian. I'm obviously a resident of City of Glendale, commercial real estate practitioner for a long, long time, was intimately involved with the downtown specific plan when it was a blimp in Mr. Hagani's eye and was being developed. And other than that, I'm glad to be here and hopefully I'll be able to bring some value to the table. With that, I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Pro Tem Chair.
Thank you very much. And as a chairman pro tem, we appreciate your being here and we look forward to your input. All right, now we can decide how we want to do this. It seems that our other commissioner is going to be later than we planned. We can make a choice to move forward. We have a quorum, as long as it's okay with the appellant. What is your choice?
Just a chair pro tem. I feel comfortable going ahead with the hearing now as long as I guess who can bring up the client and, you know, see if they want to proceed with the hearing. And if they're okay with that, I'm good.
Mr. Lemo, for the record, and give us your thoughts.
My name's Rick Lemo. I'm with Caruso Affiliated, and we're fine to go ahead with three commissioners voting. We have great trust in you all. Thank you.
Mr. Astorian, your thoughts? You okay with that?
I was going to say, hold on to your thoughts till you hear what I have to say. You may have to change your opinion about the trust, but other than that, I'm just being a moment of levity. Let's go forward.
Let's go forward. All right. Very good. So we'll start again with new business. We have general plan amendment case number PGP 2011-005, zone code map amendment case number PZON 2011-006, and street vacation case number 167V. Location is Colorado Street to the south, Orange Street to the west, Caruso Avenue to the north, and the alley between Orange Street and Brand Boulevard to the east. For this project, our senior planner is Mr. Roger Kiesel, and I'm going to turn it over to you, sir, to give us an intro to the project. Are you pushing the button? No? You're not hitting the one on the desk, are you?
Hello? Oh, I'll move. I don't think this... Oh, it's working now.
What's your chair hitting the side thing? Yes.
Oh, this one over here? Oh, maybe the chair pushed it then. Okay. Sorry, I'll start again. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Colorado Orange LLC and the Americana brand LLC have submitted applications to amend the land use map of the city's general plan, to amend the downtown and town center specific plans, to amend the zoning map, and to vacate a street to facilitate the expansion of the Americana brand mixed-use development. The site is bounded by Colorado Street to the south, South Orange Street to the west, existing development within the Americana brand to the north, the alley between South Orange Street and South Brand Boulevard to the east. The expansion includes properties located at 230 South Orange Street, which was a former recording studio, and 123 West Colorado Street, which is the existing Golden Key Hotel. And the expansion will also include the proposed vacation of South Orange Street. The expansion includes adding approximately 140,000 square feet of retail floor area in a new three-story building to accommodate a proposed Nordstrom department store. The additional floor area will be adjacent to both West Colorado Street as well as Caruso Avenue within the Americana brand and will be visible from the open space element within this development. As proposed, the management, operations, security, maintenance, and parking for the project will be integrated into the existing Americana brand development. The architectural design of the new building will be required to be compatible with the Americana. The applicants have chosen to incorporate the project into the town center specific plan rather than proceed under the current downtown specific plan to integrate the project into the Americana brand development. Additionally, the retail use proposed needs certain minimum ground floor retail area as well as floor plate dimensions, which make expansion more problematic under the current downtown specific plan and the associated development standards within this plan. The proposed general plan amendment is to change the land use designation of approximately 1.1 acres from downtown specific plan to town center specific plan. The project site is bounded by land with the land use designation of TCSP, Town Center Specific Plan, on three sides, to the west, to the north, and to the east. Those areas are also where the Americana brand is located. Given that the proposed expansion will be fully integrated into the Americana brand from an operational as well as an architectural standpoint, given that the project development under current standards creates some challenges, which would be eliminated by incorporating the project site into the TCSP, and also given that the site is surrounded on three sides by the TCSP, staff supports the proposed general plan amendment to change the land use designation of the site from DSP to TCSP. And that's shown on a map as exhibit four in your packets. It's also posted under the general plan amendment. The proposed zoning map amendment is to change the zoning of the subject site from DSP Transitional District to DSP TCSP. As a charter city, Glendale is not required to make the zoning consistent with its general plan. However, the city's policy and practice is to make its zoning and general plan consistent. The proposed zone map amendment will achieve the consistency between the zoning, the zone map and the recommended general plan land use designation. And the zoning map amendment is the second one over posted on the board. The downtown specific plan map amendments to change the project area from DSP Transitional District to DSP Town Center District are proposed to make them consistent with the proposed general plan amendment and the zoning map amendments. Three maps within the DSP are proposed to change. I'm not going to go into them real in detail. They're described in the staff report. They're also... They're posted, the before and after are posted under downtown specific plan. Only maps are required to change in the DSP. No alterations to the text of the DSP are required. The town center specific plan contains permitted uses, land use, and development standards and procedures for implementing the plan. Text amendments to the TSP include both amendments proposed to accommodate the expansion as well as amendments proposed to clean up the document. Proposed changes are described in the staff report more fully, and also as exhibit eight, I've included a strikeout underlined version of the TCSP with the proposed changes, the proposed deletions and additions. The town center specific plan also includes maps proposed to change to make them consistent with the general plan and zone map amendments. Those are also more fully described in the staff report. They were included in your packets as exhibit nine and 10, and they're also posted up on the board under the town center specific plan label. Finally, the applicant has requested that a portion of South Orange Street between West Colorado Street and Caruso Avenue be vacated. The majority of this area will be incorporated into the building site. However, the western edge would become part of a pedestrian paseo connecting West Colorado Street with the interior of the Americana brand. South Orange Street, proposed to be vacated, has a 38-foot right-of-way and currently provides access to 230 South Orange Street as well as 123 West Colorado Street. The circulation element of the general plan identifies this portion of Orange Street as a local street. Once vacated, the land will assume the zoning associated with the adjoining properties, which will be DSP TCSP after the proposed zone change is approved. In order for the Planning Commission to vacate or in order to vacate the public right-of-way, the Planning Commission must make findings that the proposed vacation is consistent with the city's general plan. The consistency findings will then become part of the Planning Commission's recommendation to the city council. The community development department recommends the Planning Commission find that the street vacation to be consistent with the general plan in that the land use can be supported within the capacity constraints of existing and realistic future infrastructure. The proposed street vacation is appropriate because South Orange Street between West Colorado and Caruso is not needed for access to either the 230 South Orange Street or the 123 West Colorado Street because both of those properties will be incorporated or absorbed into the proposed expansion of the Americana brand. Project service access like trash and those sorts of things will take place in the existing alley that's located between South Brand Boulevard and the current South Orange Street, and that alley will remain. So to conclude, staff finds that the vacation is consistent with the general plan. Finally, an addendum to the previously certified final EIR for the Americana brand has been prepared, which examines whether the proposed project or the proposed expansion will create any new significant impacts or increase the severity of previously identified impacts. This addendum, which was a real thick attachment to your report, found that the expansion will not result in any new significant impacts or substantial increasing the impacts that were already previously identified. No further action on this document is required. The Planning Division staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the proposed resolution recommending approval to the city council of the general plan amendment, the zone map amendment, the downtown specific plan amendment, and the town center specific plan amendments, and the proposed street vacation. Two sort of notes. You had included in your packet a proposed resolution that has changed, and you should have gotten a revised resolution in front of you. Okay. If... We may have to make you copies of that. There were just some little bit of changes to the language. And then finally, we received a letter yesterday from the Glendale Chamber of Commerce supporting the project, and those letters were at your desk when you came in. That concludes... Excuse me. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Mr. Kiesel, vacating the Orange Street, my only question might be is that, you know, the access of the emergency vehicles or fire vehicles to the properties, do we have enough access, you know, when we vacate that Orange Street to have access in other areas to the building?
They will have access from Caruso Avenue, which is a private street, and there were... There will be some conditions placed on the vacation, particularly with regard to the valet operation that's there now, so that emergency access will be satisfactory to the police and fire departments.
So it won't be blocked off at Colorado entrance? You know, sometimes they have those posts so that no vehicles will...
Well, the only... The... The current intersection of South Orange Street and West Colorado Street will, after the proposed vacation, will not be there anymore. It will become a, like a pedestrian signalized crossing. And so the... Any emergency access will either be from West Colorado or Caruso. There will not be a way to get cars between West Colorado and Caruso where Orange Street is now. The alley will still be maintained, though.
Any other questions?
Yes, Astorian. Yes, I do have a couple of questions. Now, in the addendum to the environmental impact report, there is a mention of a minimum 10-foot wide pedestrian walkway that is going to be proposed off of that vacated Orange Street, if I'm not wrong.
Correct.
Correct. And... But that's not in front of us at this time. We are just... What we are considering is the vacation of Orange Street.
You're considering the vacation of Orange Street and all the amendments to the land use map, to the zoning map, to the town center specific plan, as well as the downtown specific plan?
Correct.
That's what's in front of you.
Right. And for the record, right before we came out of the recess, I had asked you a question about the standards, and I showed you the book for downtown specific plan, the standards for pedestrian paseos. And I do know that the 10-foot is the very minimum that the DSP actually offers in the standards. And I was told that this is changing and is going into the town center, so therefore this may not be the same standard that is going to be in the town center specific plan. The only suggestion that I have, and this is not a concern, a very strong suggestion, that a paseo, if we are treating Colorado as it is, a secondary street, a paseo, a 10-foot paseo with 200 feet, that's approximately 280 feet the length of Orange Street, that would be a very narrow paseo when you have, and I was told there is a possibility that, and I don't want to, again, overstep my own, you know, overstay my welcome here, but that you have a building that is going to be at least 45 feet. We don't know that yet, but now we're making a decision on a paseo that is 10 feet wide. My only strong suggestion would be if we are really turning, and I don't want to use the word "turning our back" to Colorado, but if we really want to engage Colorado to a certain degree possible, I think we have to seriously consider the width of this paseo that is going to be proposed in future. But that's basically what the suggestion that I have as far as that paseo is concerned. Then the other question that I have is about the... Again, this was in the addendum to the EIR, not in the staff report, that the loading and unloading section that right now Orange Street is accommodating is going to be changed over to Colorado. Is that correct, Mr. Kiesel, or...
At this point, that's what's proposed. There will also be a loading area within the proposed building. Thank you.
I have no further comments at this time, but we do have one speaker request from Mr. Rick Lemo. The appellant?
The applicant.
The applicant. Not appeals. Looking for appeals. Sorry about that.
Rick Lemo, Caruso Affiliated. Thank you, pro-chair. Sheets, planning commissioners, and city staff, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Before I begin, some very brief comments. I wanted to call your attention to a letter, which I'm not certain is in the packet or not, from John Lacasio, the president of our Glendale Historical Society, and a subsequent article from the Glendale News Press.
We'll make copies of that.
And I do know that you have the Chamber of Commerce letter. "We're very excited about the opportunities this expansion provides for the revitalization of downtown Glendale and really the completion of the next step for the Americana brand. This parcel was always envisioned as part of the Glendale Town Center, and finally, after four years, that vision will now be realized. We appreciate the true spirit of partnership with city officials and staff and the continued success of the Americana brand. And I'd like to specifically thank Mr. Kiesel, Mr. Hagani, Ms. Van Miden, and your entire team for your hard work and guidance through this process. We ask that you recommend approval to the city council of the bundle of amendments and the street vacation before you. We will be available. Our project managers, Brian Cornelius and Peter Hayden, are here to answer any questions that you may have or that may not be addressed in the staff report or by staff. And again, we appreciate your moving forward on this today and recommending this to council. Thank you."
Thank you. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anybody else that would like to make comments? Seeing none. Okay. Any other questions of staff or... Mr. Astorian.
Thank you, Mr. Sheets. This, I don't know who I'm going to be asking this question from, but on page 3.0-16 of your addendum to the environmental impact report, maybe it's the gentleman that...
I think we'll go with... Planner, right now.
There's actually also the consultant here that... There's actually also the consultant here that prepared the document.
If I can ask him the question, then I'll be great. There is, in the first column, you have size square feet, and you have an existing size of site of 436,000 and proposed expansion of 577,000. That includes the 140,000, obviously. Correct? And then the last column, the Saturday peak hour volumes in traffic, I found it rather interesting that AAB is going to have less traffic, the total -- is this what it says? That the total project has got less traffic than Nordstrom on the peak hours? Or am I reading it wrong?
The way I read it, and if I'm reading it incorrectly, step in, is currently, on the last column, the trip generation is, for the Saturday peak, is 2,033 trips. Once this expansion is absorbed into the project, it's anticipated to have 2,398 trips on the Saturday peak. So that peak increases 365 trips. So in effect, Nordstrom's is creating that many trips.
Next to them.
Please go ahead.
We're good. This is the other letter. Okay. If we have no other input and no further questions, we'll close the public hearing, and we can go into deliberations. Who would like to start? Mr. Lee, please.
This is a -- it's always been a, you know, Americana has been a good, you know, part of Glendale and contributing member of Glendale. And as Mr. Lemo said, you know, this project will pretty much, I guess, complete its quest to, you know, for that site. So I do not see any challenges here or any concerns. You know, I'd like to support this project.
Very good. Mr. Historian. Commissioner Historian.
Mr. Chair, I -- there's no questions about it, that the addition would be nothing but spectacular. My -- again, it's not a concern, it's a suggestion. We are talking about vacating an Orange Street of about 38 feet, I believe, curb-to-curb, if I'm not wrong, or 48. And talking, or at least in the addendum to the EIR, speaking about a paseo of 10 feet wide, and that, if there is anything that we can do to expand on the width of that paseo, I think it will be, it will do Colorado Street a lot of good. And the other suggestion that I would have is, would be the Orange Street loading and unloading that is going to be part of it at least. And I don't know how it's going to look, but from what the plans that I had, I believe it's Exhibit 16 or 17 that I had, it would be right at the mouth of that paseo. These are just some issues that I, you know, just suggestions that maybe we should look into in order. And that, I think, you know, the parking, with the new parking, downtown parking standards and so forth, none of that is an issue with the expansion at all. With that, I thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Will these concerns that you have, will they be also reviewed and addressed by the design review team anyways?
Mr. Higani.
Yes. The City Council and the agency will be the final, will have the final design review authority over this project. And the comments that we have heard could be proposed in two different ways. If it's the desire of the commission as a whole to include them as part of your recommendation to the council, that would be your option. If not, we will recommend, we will include them in the staff report to the City Council as comments from Commissioner Historian.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if you want our input or our suggestion on that. To me, both sounds good. I mean, you're going to do the report and include the commissioner's statements, which shows that they, the comments appeared during our public hearing. I think they're good comments, and I have to believe that with what I know about the Americana right now and the design that's there and the usage that happens, I can't imagine the plan is not going to work well, and the right format and the right makeup is going to come out of this long process. So I think they're good comments, but I can't see that there's any restriction there. I think they're, I think it'll take care of itself, is what I would hope. There'll be other opportunities to speak to it. Having sit -- did you have any?
I'm ready to make motion.
Okay. I would just say that that was going to be my comment. I am supportive of the project. I see nothing but good things. I know there's been a lot of controversy about Americana, a lot of issues over the years, but from my experience, what I see and what happens at that location and the number of people that come to Glendale to use it, nothing but positive. And this project and these changes to enhance the project will make that even better. So with that, we're looking for a motion.
Can I move that up on the consideration of the proposed resolution relating to the proposed general plan amendment number PGP 2011-005, proposed downtown specific plan amendment number PGP 2011-005, proposed town center specific plan amendment number PGP 2011-005, a zone change number 2011-006, and street vacation number 167V of South Orange Street between West Colorado Street and Caruso Avenue. The Planning Commission hereby recommends that City Council adopt the proposed amendments, and it has the resolution language attached to it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. So we've moved it and accepted it, and we'll move forward on that. That wasn't very peaceful. That went well. Okay. Next item. Planning Division updates.
Excuse me, Chair.
Oh.
Just on behalf of our company, thank you very much. We appreciate your consideration.
No, not a problem. Planning Division updates.
Chairman Sheets and commission members, at this time, we do not have any updates.
All right. Comments from commissioners.
Commissioners, excuse me. I do know that an appeal of one of the commission's decisions, I believe it's --
The appeal of the Champlain School use variance and standards variance is going to the --
City Council.
City Council on May 31 in the evening. Thank you, Tim, for prompting me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just blanked.
And comments from commissioners. Mr. Historian.
I -- that's quite all right. I don't have any comments, but I do have a joke. This may be unusual for this commission, but it's the first time for everything. So I'm going to share this joke with you. So there is this planning director with two deputy planners en route to lunch, walk through a meadow, and sure enough, they come across a lamp, an old antiquated lamp. They pick it up, one of them rubs it, poof, comes out the genie. The genie comes out and says, ordinarily, I grant three wishes. However, because there's three of you, I'll grant each a wish. So one of the deputy planners goes, me first, me first, me first. I want to be in Bahamas on a speedboat, going up and down the coast and having a lot of fun. Poof, the wish is granted, and he's gone. The second deputy goes, me next, me next, me next. I want to be with my honey in Waikiki Beach and sipping on pina colada and having a lot of fun. Poof, she goes. The genie turns around and looks at the planning director and asks him, well, it's your turn. To which the planning director says, I want those both back at their desk after lunch. With that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And with that, ever efficient. And with that, we'll look for adjournment. We have adjournment.